Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Monday, June 12, 2023 Eden Prairie Planning Commission Meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic or the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start off this evening with the approval of tonight's agenda. Does anybody have any comments or changes on the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Weber.
Second.
I thought I heard the second from Commissioner Mehdi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Abstained. Motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the meeting last Monday, May 22, 2023. Does anybody have any changes to those minutes they'd like to discuss or propose? Not seeing any, entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So.
Commissioner Kirk, and seconded.
Second.
By Commissioner Weber, by a hair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Abstained. Motion passes unanimously. We have two public hearings on the agenda this evening. Both, I believe, will be presented by staff. The first one is a code amendment for a flex service zoning district. I think we'll hear from staff first, then we'll see if anybody wants to participate in the public hearing process after that. All right, Jeremy?
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. As you noted, we do have two public hearings. The first is a proposed new zoning district, flex service, what we're calling it. Some of you may recall from the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, we created a new land use called Flex, Flex Service, and so this is a corresponding zoning district for that. We're trying to address those goals that were outlined in the ASPIRE 2040 Comprehensive Plan, those being kind of creating an opportunity for flexible use or flexible services in select areas, allow for reinvestment in those areas, recognizing that there's a diverse land use and different business community and business climate within those areas, and also to identify an opportunity for some of those uses that are currently in the Town Center, the TOD, or the Golden Triangle area, and maybe find a more productive home for them in the long term. Also, we want to recognize that both of the areas identified in the Comprehensive Plan do show, or, excuse me, are near residential, so we want to be cognizant of the impacts to that, to those impacts. This zoning district also is attempts to introduce adaptive reuse of existing buildings. There's this whole, these two areas are largely built out, so we anticipate reuse of the existing building and the existing infrastructure. We don't want to make those obsolete too much. We also want to provide flexibility for unique projects and properties, again, to encourage reinvestment and encourage long-term success of those areas. And we also just want to incentivize new markets as they mature and develop over time. As I said before, this is just creating a zoning district. We're not rezoning any property. We're not re-guiding any property. This is just creating a zoning district, similar to how we accomplished the mixed-use zoning district a couple of months ago, where we created an opportunity for the local businesses to kind of capture some of the goals of our Comprehensive Plan in the city with the creation of a zoning district. So not a zone change tonight. No properties will be zoned differently after tonight or after the council acts on this action. As I said before, there's two primary areas guided flex service. One of those, the primary one, being north of 212 and 5, west of Mitchell, and generally centered around the Martin Drive area, includes Corporate Way and Commerce Way in terms of the existing built environment there. Also, there's another area near the intersections of Pioneer Trail and Pioneer Trail. Those two areas were identified for the flex service. This does not mean that other areas can't be re-guided in the future, but this is the kind of primary focus of the flex service zoning area, is those areas guided for flex In the development of this ordinance, and again, trying to respond to changing markets, trying to respond to the idea of maybe finding a better long-term home for certain businesses or certain uses, we identified primarily five main incentives kind of built into the zoning district to encourage property owners to re, or to use this as a viable option as they redevelop and reuse their site and continue to use their sites. Those five main incentives include flexibility in the site design, flexibility in uses, flexibility in the parking requirements, flexibility in the building materials, and flexibility in signage. So we see all of those things as kind of impacting the business community and how they can use their site, and we're trying to provide as much opportunity and option for them to kind of pick from that cafeteria of options in terms of what best suits their Kind of glossed over it earlier, but most of these, most of the subject area that's guided for flex service is currently zoned industrial. So we use the industrial zoning district as kind of the foundation for what we created. We don't want to create any non-conformities or any, create any hazards or impediments for the business community, so we base it largely on what they're allowed to do now. The site design, what we did in the zoning district is establish setbacks throughout this zoning district, the front, rear, and side, and rear in your staff memo, it goes, there's a table that provides all of those. The note to take away from there is we, all the setbacks are less than what they would be for the industrial zoning district. So a property in, using the flex service could build closer to the street, closer to the side property lines than they would otherwise be allowed in the industrial zoning district. So we've reduced those setbacks, allowing them to get closer to the property lines. Excuse me. From the use standpoint, basically, we took what's allowed in the industrial zoning district, allowed those uses, but also we added some commercial uses within the, that's allowed in the city. Primarily, the focus was those auto-centric or auto-oriented uses. We added those. Those are largely considered retail. There are many, in many cases, that are considered retail. We allow those in this flex service zoning district. Key takeaway here from the use flexibility is normally in an industrial zoning district, you're allowed up to 15% of that parcel for retail uses. In the, in the flex service, we allow 25% as the base, and then in certain parcels that front on a principal arterial, which is Highway 212, you can go up to 100%. Again, recognizing the commercial nature, commercial character of those parcels that front on a major, major arterial here in town. There are a number of waivers in the area that have increased that 15% to higher, higher percentage. What we're trying to do is take away that requirement to go through the PUD process for this select area. As I mentioned before, parcels that are adjacent to principal arterial, those can go up to the 100% of retail space, and as you note here from our Comprehensive Plan, the only applicable principal arterial is the Highway 212. That's basically the southern border of those parcels along Mitchell and Martin Drive. So, again, that was a cognizant era. We purposely made that decision to stick to the highest level or highest amount of traffic to allow the rest, allow the commercial, in part because remembering, a lot of these areas are adjacent to residential, and we didn't want to introduce a lot of new commercial in those areas that might have an impact from a noise or light standpoint. Flexibility parking requirements. How we drafted this is similar to, to how we created it for the mixed-use zoning district in a bit. You can meet the published standards for the, for the uses that are allowed in a code number effect. We'll go over those in a moment with the next item. You can obtain a PUD waiver for reduced parking requirements as the practice is now, or you can prepare a parking plan for the council to approve. And there are certain criteria that we list here. Basically, what we want is a mechanism where the council can review and, review a proposal that a business may or may not need all the parking that we prescribe, and if they can demonstrate that need and doesn't impact adjacent businesses or adjacent areas, the council can approve a plan if they desire. Flexibility in building materials. We just showed the, the area around Martin Drive as an example here in your staff report and on your screens, but basically what we're looking at is if your, if your building has frontage on an arterial street, you must meet the existing commercial standard, which is the 75, 25% class one, class two materials, and then the whole kind of list of materials that are allowed there. And those, those buildings that are front on other streets but not the principal arterial, you just need to meet the industrial standard, which is a slightly less standard. Excuse me, it's still the 20, or 75, 25, but there's additional building materials that are allowed there that wouldn't otherwise be allowed in the commercial. And then finally, for those parcels or those portions of the building that don't have any frontage on a public street, you know, side yards, rear yards, there's a different standard proposed, which is the 60, 40, class one and class two material. Again, trying to incentivize people to reuse the existing buildings that may have been built before our design standards were in place. Should note that this only applies to the building materials, not the roof articulation or the plane articulation or any of those features, it's just the building materials. So that's, that's the proposal there from a building material standpoint. And then the flexibility in signage, basically, keep in mind that this largely developed as an industrial area. We are adopting, retaining the 80 square feet. Those businesses that have a commercial component, you would be allowed up to 50 square feet. So this increases over what would be allowed in the commercial area. And then the wall signage is basically the same as allowed in the commercial area in terms of what's allowed there. So we try to be consistent with what's either in the area or what we're trying to achieve from a long-term use standpoint. With that, that's my presentation. We are recommending approval of the ordinance as drafted. If there are any questions, then we have to stand for those. This project or this, this text amendment was presented to the Chamber of Commerce as kind of a general framework standpoint early May. It hadn't fully been fleshed out yet, but we did share it with the Chamber of Commerce, and we have not received any comments for or against the proposal since it's been out there for a public hearing standpoint. So at this stage, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate that. Commissioners, do you have any initial questions of the city planner? Commissioner Grody.
Jeremy, does restaurants classify simply as retail?
Yes.
Commissioner Mehdi.
I have a few questions on the parking and this idea of the parking plan. So if there's a use that gets approved, has a unique kind of situation where it might, you know, not maybe have that much of a parking demand, it's approved, and let's say down the road, the use changes, is there a mechanism in place that the, that this is going to trigger for the city to, to say, hey, we have to, you know, do we get to go back and look at that parking plan situation? Is that, how does that get monitored?
That's a frequent occurrence, frankly, where a use changes and something, some improvement on the property necessary, identified as necessary by the new owner, they want to do something different. They add in addition. They want to change the parking lot configuration. They want to add a patio or something like that. Frequently, we will get those, and then we can apply our zoning and land use application process to them, and then there's the, either administrative process or a process through which you, as the planning commission, the council, review it. It's pretty common that, that something triggers a review.
Okay. And then a couple of comments slash questions on the uses. So when I think of the, this, this flex service, I think it's, we kind of intended to be sort of somewhere between this industrial and commercial, maybe combo, or these unique uses that don't fall squarely in one category. And a couple of those that I saw on that report, so commercial kennels, which I think of as doggy daycare, dog boarding, and/or training, in my head, that would be a prime example of a, of a flex type of use. And so I was surprised to see that was indicated as, as not allowed in this one, and I'm wondering if there was any background on that or discussion with the city. I would recommend that we do allow commercial kennels as, in the flex service as an allowed use.
Mr. Chair, we did review all of the uses. It was a balance, as you say, we're trying to create a kind of a unique kind of situation between industri, strictly industrial and strictly commercial. That is certainly, we, something we can certainly look at. We think we try to balance, trying to keep the industrial, the industrial, and the, this flex area more jobs related, but we can certainly look into that.
One other, I guess, maybe suggestion I would have, and maybe this can be part of our further discussion when we get to that, but on the, on the retail restriction of 25%, again, thinking about some of the uses in the area, and as you pointed out, the uses that come to mind are those ones that actually are along Highway 5 there, so then they would meet that 100% allowed. But there is a number of small properties, too. When I think of this flex service, I think of, I think of some of these smaller industrial buildings that might be reused down the road into something else, and I would suggest we may allow, instead of just 25%, have, have a minimum allowed, so like the greater of 25% of the building or 5,000 square feet. So if it is one of those small buildings, and they wanted, you know, a retail user in there, obviously, one of the larger buildings, we're not looking to turn that into a strip mall of 100% commercial, so the 25% makes sense. But if you have a small building, then it's a little, you know, that doesn't really allow them to put a single user in there, so maybe the idea of a minimum square footage, so that, you know, to allow up to one single user. So that may be something we can discuss further, and I don't really have a question there, that's just a suggestion. But then, the last topic, and I think we've had some discussion in meetings past on this, but, you know, there's this very blurry line between, so gymnasium is allowed use under this flex service, which I think makes a lot of sense, but reading the definition of gymnasium, there's, there's certain athletic uses, I'll call them, that are not allowed, and they're only allowed in, considered retail, so fitness center. And there's this really blurry line that I struggle with, because I do think there's a lot of these fitness uses that should be able to go into the flex service use, and I just wanted to rattle off some of these, what I'm seeing out there as, as uses that maybe either are, are trending and/or we just already have in the area. So there's, there's a, a new pickleball, you know, you'll see these pickleball facilities coming out. I think that would fall under the definition of the gymnasium as it's written. But then you have CrossFit. I think that's a really blurry one, a CrossFit gym, what category that might fit into. There's things like martial arts and dance studios, which would not be allowed in the flex service by definition of gymnasium. There's places like spin studios, there's parkour places, and there's rock climbing facilities. So I think the rock climbing would probably fall under, but I have a little concern with that definition. So I just wanted to read it for the benefit of us here, and maybe this further discussion about if, is it really about the definition of gymnasium, or do we think that we should fully bring over, you know, I guess, more inclusivity into that definition of what a fitness center is? But in our code, the gymnasium is a building or space within a building with a wall height of not less than 20 feet, and providing facilities such as courts, turf fields, batting cages, gymnastics studios, swim schools, and supporting uses for recreation and physical training. So CrossFit, maybe. Uses that are not considered gymnasium under this definition are fitness centers, martial arts studios, and dance studios. So that's the thing that I struggle, again, with the fact that I feel like a martial arts studio or a dance studio, and then you have something like a spin studio or a CrossFit, which one does that fall into gets really blurry? So has there, I guess, one question for staff is, has there any, been any discussion on the definition of gymnasium, or any, any thoughts on, on, on why we want to, if, if that's the case, keep fitness centers out, out of this or not?
Chair, Commissioners, that's an excellent question. The uses that you describe in, in the definition you talk about, and written in the code, is, if the building wall is 20 feet high or higher, that's the gymnasium. Those other uses, the, the dance studios, the other, other things that are in buildings or spaces less than 20 feet high, those are, we consider retail. And so those would fit under the 100% retail or up to the 25% retail allowed within our zoning district. That's how they're allowed elsewhere. Staff needed, and the city made it, needed to make a, I guess, a distinction between those fitness, commercial fitness type, commercial recreation type uses in retail spaces versus those in larger industrial, usually industrial spaces, because of the clear spans and the, the roof height. So that's, that's how they drew that line. So many of those uses are allowed in the flex zoning district, however, they're just classified as a retail use.
And potentially would be limited then unless they're on that Highway 5 arterial.
Yep.
Yeah, just some, something to think about. That's all. Thank you.
Interesting thoughts. Thanks for bringing that up. Other commissioner questions? I have two binary things, if you don't mind, Jeremy. In the proposed texts, they start with their own page numbers after your staff report, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. On page 2, each line has a number on the left-hand column, so I'm on line 55, under required conditions. The first required condition of this is that the redevelopment shall be in substantial conformance with the Martin Drive special area study. Should we also include if they're also in the Pioneer Trail study area, special area as well? Just to clarify that, one, one should follow one conforming document and the other the other?
That's a good, good catch, Chair. What I would recommend maybe is redevelopment shall be in substantial conformance with any special area studies applicable.
Perfect.
That way, if there's a new study, or we name something different in the future, we, we're covered.
Okay, great. And then I'm tuning, tuning two more pages to page four, line item 112, which is under the section of pedestrian and off-street bicycle facility standards. Item B, line 112, it talks about a sidewalk or trail must be provided that connects the front door of a principal building. I'm thinking that some of these buildings may be multi-tenant, so could we change the word "the" front door to "each" front door of a principal building? Would that make more sense?
Yeah, I think, I believe that would work.
Very good. Thank you. Those are my comments. Any other comments before we open it up to the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing, and I don't see anybody in the audience, so seeing none and hearing none, I might take a, a motion from one of the commissioners to close the public hearing if you so, so see fit.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Okay, moved by Weber.
Second.
Second by Kirk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed on this item. Commissioners, further thoughts on this new zoning district? I personally think it's a, a great idea, and in following the ASPIRE 2040 plans directions. Seems like it's well-thought-out, consistent, doesn't burden any existing properties, so I think staff's done a wonderful job of crafting it. Commissioner Grody.
Can someone tell me, how broad is the 40-foot-high restriction throughout the city? We're, I mean, we're going to have to start building up one of these days, and this area might take a two or three-story building without any trouble. Some, and, you know, but we obviously won't want to go up to five or six stories if we're close to retail, or residential. I just don't know where the 40-foot limit came from and how broad it is.
Chair, Commissioners, I don't know the, the origin of the 40-foot, to be honest with you. I believe it's pretty consistent throughout most of the city. Maybe the TOD and the Town Center, though, they're allowed a little bit higher. Certainly, it's certainly something we can look at. I would not necessarily suggest doing it for the flex service, only because the flex service is adjacent to some commercial area, or, excuse me, some residential area, and if it's appropriate to increase the height, it'll likely be strictly a commercial area or others.
But presumably, a landowner could request variance to that 40 feet.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. Of, of course, yeah, they can always apply for a PUD and demonstrate those requirements. The other thing to keep in mind, too, is the area near the Pioneer Trail, the Pioneer Trail intersection, that's near the airport, so you're likely going to be restricted in some fashion anyway. But yeah, of course, that's always an option to go higher through the PUD process.
Good, thank you.
Other thoughts from other commission members before we vote?
I'd just like to reinforce what the chair said here. I think it's a reasonable approach to increasing flexibility in some interesting areas of the city, and I think anything we can do to make it easier to utilize the land in a effective fashion is, is a good thing, making sure we keep the standards we have. But I'd like to speak to, or at least agree with Commissioner Mehdi's comment about the, the dance studio, the, the martial arts, you know, that definition seems to be a little bit soft, and, and maybe even a little bit arbitrary, although I'm not sure I understand all of the issues. But I, I think that point's a reasonable one to, to at least consider, you know, what is a gymnasium and what isn't a gymnasium.
And I'll, I'll maybe agree with both of them and suggest that maybe if that's something that staff wants to pursue further, that issue should probably get taken up later in our zoning ordinance definitions, as opposed to maybe specifically targeting the zoning district, because it may affect other districts, as Commissioner Mehdi pointed out, and as our opportunities change over the years with different services and sports, fitness styles, maybe that expanded definition may make sense. Sure.
I, I agree. I think that's the right way to go about it, because we're not going to write the definition of gymnasium here today, and it's not in this, you know, it's not specific to this code. One thing, though, I think's connected to this point, and, and Commissioner Kirk, I'd like your thoughts on this, is that retail exception, we can have up to 25% of retail, so that erases the issue with the blurry line. It's, if it's a gym, doesn't matter, it's allowed if it's within that 25%, unless it's on the arterial road. This idea of introducing a minimum allowed square footage, especially in a smaller building, that way, let's say we have, you know, one of these 10,000-square-foot buildings, and they want to put a martial arts studio in there, which would not be allowed if, unless that martial arts was, you know, we'd have to be doing that calculation. So that's one idea that could help, then, the smaller buildings, and then essentially we might feel like, well, that 25% will sort of cover this, this problem, but would sort of allow this, these sort of blurry line uses, exceptions, to still be able to go in there as long as they're within that 25%. I just, I'm concerned with these smaller buildings, that I do see a situation like that happening, where they're, they can't put their one martial arts user in there just because their building's too small, and they, you know, it hits that 25%. So if we had a minimum.
Well, I certainly would be open to the concept. It's, I, I don't think I'm personally qualified to say is 5,000 square foot the right number.
Yeah.
But the concept of, of allowing a, a larger retail use in a smaller building makes sense to me. I don't know the right, the right way to do, or the right number to, to put on that, how that would make sense.
Or I might interject, applicants aren't bashful. They're going to call you, right? And, and find out. And, and find out what method to go through to apply for whether that's a conditional use permit or a variance or something like that, Jeremy?
Yeah, Chair, they, they would ask what's allowed and if it's 25% or what have you, and they say it's 25%, that's a 1,300 square foot user, uh, use, and then they need 20 or 2,000 square feet, they'll ask for a waiver from those, for that situation if that's the smallest. That's probably the way I would recommend doing it.
Yeah, okay. So the process is a, is a waiver, not like a variance? Or what is exactly, how would that, how would that work?
Usually they're waivers that we've granted in the past for the use where it increases over, over what the minimal or what the maximum was because they can show need and benefit and no impact to the city. That's how I would recommend handling that rather than using a, a, a basic minimum number.
Now, does that require a PUD process to do that?
Yeah, it does.
So if I'm an existing building and I simply want to renovate and re-tenant it, I might have been an old auto shop, but now I want to put in a martial arts studio next to, you know, some online business that just has inventory and light office use maybe. That type of situation, because these are mostly existing buildings that we're talking about rather than full new construction or redevelopments, right? So would that type of situation go through the PUD process? If you have an existing building, you're not really changing the size of the building, you are putting money renovating, changing uses, whatnot, does that, does that trigger PUD?
Their request would, yes. Because while the, the change in use by itself does not trigger PUD, the, the fact that they would like to use the building in a, in a way that's not permitted, they want to waive or change that, that maximum number, that would trigger the PUD. And to your question earlier, that would trigger a, a review of site improvements, landscaping, parking, things like that. Those are the things that usually we, you know, we, we look at when we start looking at changes of uses. And all of, every property has that permission to, or has the opportunity to do that. And frankly, a lot of them have acquired waivers over the past, you know, 30 years. So maybe that building allows a 50, 50% of the floor area for commercial, for example. That's part of our research as we review and receive those questions.
One of the examples that comes to mind is the gymnastics studio, I forget what the name of the business is. They had come in for a waiver and I don't recall if it was this 15, for the industrial zoning at the time, I think they exceeded the 15% and we gave them a waiver for that. So.
If that's a reasonable process, I'd support that completely.
Agree. Sound like we have some pretty good checks and balances in place to manage and control what we want, ensuring that we stick with the strategy and the plan that's in place.
Chair Commissioners, exactly. That's, that's, this ordinance would establish a framework or a baseline of what the requirements is, and there's always the opportunity to review a project based on the merits of that project. And if warranted, grant waivers and exceptions to that, any, for any number of reasons.
Good discussion. Follow-up comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kirk.
Move to approve ordinance amending City Code Chapter 11, creating a flex service zoning district as represented in the June 12, 2023 staff report.
Thank you for that motion, Commissioner Kirk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I, can I make a, can I make an amendment to the motion or clarification? Your two suggestions on line 55 and 112, I don't know if we need to acknowledge that in the motion.
I think we should. I think we should. Thank you. Would you like to amend your motion, Commissioner Kirk, or would you like someone else to?
I can amend it. It's just put at the end of the motion, including appropriate wording comments made at the meeting.
Is that satisfactory, Steph?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Kirk's amended motion has been duly noted and entered. Would anybody like to second that amended motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Grody. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or want to abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Before we move on to the second public hearing, I passed up a, an administrative thing at the front end for roll call. Do you mind if I go back and just quickly make sure that we have everybody who's sitting here announced? Commissioner Kirk?
Here.
Piper, absent. Vice Chair Farr, here. Mehdi?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Grody?
Here.
Sherwood?
Here.
Weber?
Yep, here.
Civilay, absent. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to our second public hearing, which is a code amendment for parking regulations. And again, Jeremy, would you run us through this item, please?
Yes, Chair Commissioners. Steph, over, well, over the last couple of years, this has been on our to-do list, is kind of periodically what we do is we review the zoning ordinance, the, the areas of high touch, frequency of questions, comments, concerns from the general public, from business community, things like that. And we use that opportunity as a, as a barometer to look at potential changes and do additional research to make sure we're on this, on the right path in terms of what our ordinance requires. And kind of came to our list early, a couple, a couple of years ago was the parking ordinance. So based on last couple of years of review of our ordinance, what other cities are doing, what the, what we need from a parking requirement, we're at the position where we're recommending some changes to our parking ordinance. We'd like to recognize that parking is taken for granted a lot in the suburban area, but it's a high-cost portion of the building community, a lot to acquire, a lot to maintain, a lot to construct. And so we don't want to be willy-nilly with our parking requirements, recognizing also that a lack of parking will have a detriment, impact on the business and also perhaps the neighborhood. So we want to try to get it right at the first, the first opportunity. With this, with this parking ordinance here, what we tried to do is, is organize the parking requirements for clarity and hopefully it will be evident when we get through that portion. We want to provide some flexibility for compact cars because we're getting quite a few calls and questions on that over the years. We wanted to provide a, a process for the shared parking component, again, recognizing that two adjacent businesses may generate one trip and don't necessarily need extra parking for, for those situations. We also look to adjust parking requirements for certain uses, banks, gymnasiums, nursing homes, large shopping centers, for example. And also wanted to define parking standards for other uses, for example, daycare centers. We don't, we don't establish a parking standard for every use thought of. We, we use as our flexibility and our discretion, both at the staff, planning commission, council level, to determine what the appropriate use is. So purposely, we don't have a 17-page-long list of all uses like some cities do in terms of what their parking requirements are. One of the things we're proposing with this change is introduce an op, option for compact parking stalls. This proposal allows up to 10, 10% of the required parking spaces in parking lot, ramp or garage to be marked for compact cars and may be counted towards the required parking. Currently, people could use compact parking spaces but not count them towards their required use, their required parking number unless granted by a waiver or something like that. So what we do is we're recommending an opportunity for up to 10% of the required spaces. Compact spaces are eight feet by 16 feet, which is a reduction from the nine by 18 feet that a normal space is. And then they must be appropriately identified. We didn't specify that they needed to be signed or painted. We, we wanted the, the, the business owner to identify them in the most appropriate way for their needs. This does not reduce the drive aisle width, which is 24 feet for a 90, excuse me, for a 90, 90-degree parking space. Again, we still want to make sure people can get in and around parking spaces. What we're proposing here is a shared parking opportunity also. Off-street parking spaces for two or more uses with substantially different hours of operation may be provided in the shared facility. Again, worked into the code is, is, is flexibility so that we can use our know-how and our expertise and our experiences and applying the right-size number for parking requirements, but provide a process for which that parking can be shared legally. And so what we're basically looking for is a shared parking plan, which will include quite a bit of data on the beginning in, or the, at the beginning. What, what's the parking needs for the proposed uses? What, what examples are you seeing in your other uses that you have? To try to get a, a sense of what the real parking requirement is for that given business. And again, this, staff or the planning commission, the council can approve any of those type of reviews as part of your normal review of an application. This is somewhat pattern after what we did with the mixed-use zoning district, where you have multiple uses coming together. What's the parking requirements, the parking needs for, for those uses? And then work on shared parking agreements, shared access agreements, things of that nature. Again, trying to recognize suburban character, people are going to be driving to these sites, how much spaces do they actually need? Other things we propose in this ordinance is reduction or adjustment of the parking ratios. Banks currently require parking at six per thousand. We're recommending five per thousand, which is five, five spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area. This is consistent with our, our general retail and our general office spaces. So a kind of a standard throughout the city in terms of those three uses. It is a reduction from the six. Some cities go lowest four. We weren't cuff, 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 excuse me, comfortable with that and the long-term impact in terms of reuse and what really was needed. So that's, that's where we're at. Keep in mind that the proof of parking is still on the table. People can, if they don't need the five per thousand, they can show a five per thousand, but only construct less than that. So there's that opportunity for, for businesses to right-size their parking requirements. The daycare centers, currently there's no parking requirement in the code. We have to kind of apply best practices for that use. What we are proposing here is one space per employee on the largest work shift plus one business vehicle. So if they have a van or something like that, it'll take, take people to the, to the park or to the library. Plus one space for every, six kids the facility is licensed for. And keep in mind the licensing is a state action and it's often based on exits, you know, fire code, but also the number of teachers and, and support staff that are available. This is, I'd like to say this is consistent with what other cities are doing, but other cities are all over the board. I think this is where we're comfortable from a application standpoint without impacting negatively our existing daycare centers, many of which are based on this model here. The used gymnasiums, currently the requirement is five per thousand of gross floor area. We're reducing that to two and a half stalls per thousand square feet of gross floor area. That is based a large part on what other gymnasiums we have in town, what they require. We haven't observed a lot of issues, a lot of concerns. So it's, it's somewhat based on that model. It decreases the non-conformity in, in all cases, but I won't say that it's the lowest of what all of them are. There's some, some have, are parking much less than that, but we feel comfortable with the two and a half spaces per thousand of gross floor area. I should also point out that this is the general assembly area of a gymnasium. If they had fixed seating, for example, if they had like a bleacher set up for basketball or a bleacher set up for a pool, that fixed seating would generate its own number because that's an assembly area and it'll likely generate more parking demand. And that is a one per three spaces. There's going to be one space per three seats. And then also for the commercial retail area, currently requirement is five per thousand gross floor area. What we're proposing is, is adjustment of that requirement. Still five per thousand for the, the, the less than 30,000 square foot commercial retail spaces, but more than 30,000, four and a half, and then more than 20,000 square feet, 4.25 spaces per thousand of gross leasable area. In, in these situations, this is pretty consistent with waivers that we've granted over the last 10 years or so. So we're not drastically reducing those requirements, but we are trying to fit with, with what we've approved in the past, recognizing that we haven't seen a lot of concerns or comments. And again, the point here is we don't require everybody to go through the PUD process for the parking that they need. One thing I mentioned last month was the nursery assisted living. We're removing the requirement that those uses have covered parking currently for multifamily projects, their properties. Half of the required spaces need to be covered. We, we're removing that for the nursery and assisted living type projects. And Ms. Mehdi, you mentioned a month ago with the Baker assisted living project, what happens if those changes? And if those, those changes, similar to the question earlier, is use change, they'll, they'll be required to provide covered parking if, if it, for example, moves from a nursery facility to a active or just a senior housing project, they would have to require, or they would have to cover half of their parking, required parking spaces. We found that nursery and assisted living generally don't drive, so you, effect, the effect is you're covering half of the employees' parking spaces, which frankly, I would love as an employee here in, in Ian Prairie, but I think it's a, a stretch to require, require that. With that, that's what I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but staff is recommending approval of the ordinance as drafted.
Thank you, Steph. Appreciate that. Initial questions of staff, Commissioner Grody.
I don't see any mention here of handicap parking. Is there a blanket? We just leave that up to the owners?
No, there, there's a, a state requirement or federal requirement, ADA requirements, a, a number of parking spaces per number of spaces within the parking lot.
Okay, so that's incorporated automatically, yeah. How about electric vehicles? We're going to worry about that someday?
We are, worry is strong term. We didn't, we didn't put that in this code just because that's something we, we've been working with each property owners. They come forward as an encouragement to their PUD. You may see some required EV parking in the future, but not as part of this application.
Good, it's fine. Glad you asked that. Thank you. Commissioner Mehdi.
I have a question related to the shared parking agreement. Reading the section in the code about it, there's kind of four, it says the following standards must be met. There's four standards. The last one is that a shared parking and cross-access or similar agreement must be approved by the city and recorded against both properties. So that implies that this shared parking situation is only amongst two different properties. And, and in my head, I'm understanding this is more even within a single property with multiple uses, you can, you know, calculate your required parking by allowing this overlap if you have a mixed-use property. So apartments with retail below one property, and let's say you can have some overlap, that wouldn't require you recording any agreement between properties because it's all on the same property. So I'm wondering, I guess the first question would be, is the intent for this only to be between two properties? Or should we maybe, you know, like change the wording of that last one to say like, if applicable, have a, an agreement in place between two properties?
Chair Commissioners, in terms of the need for a shared parking agreement for different uses within the sim, within the same property, I don't think we need to separate agreement because that would be memorialized in likely development agreement. And if we needed to do a separate document between the city and the, the property owner that's taking advantage of the shared parking uses, I can't think of a situation that wouldn't be otherwise covered with the development agreement or a similar type document. It is going to be necessary for, like if property A wants to share parking requirements with property B, property B is not part of our application process at this stage, for example, we would want to memorialize that and make sure that they're part of that. And that's the situation we're contemplating with the shared parking agreement, that all three parties would be part of, the city included.
So you're saying that there, this isn't, when you say three parties, that you're saying the city and two different owners?
In those situations, likely, most of the time, I think it will be between the city and the developer as part of the development agreement.
With that, then I would recommend maybe in the verbiage of this ordinance, when it talks about a shared parking agreement, which would, could be in the development agreement, to, to revise it to say, and recorded against both. and record it against both properties, and just say, and record it against any applicable properties, whether it's one or five that are, you know, agreeing to share parking. I think that would help clarify. So it's line 116, that section. And then one other, I think this is just a typo. So on the table where it talks about the parking requirements, and it's showing retail over 200,000 square feet at 4.25 stalls per thousand, then it has a separate line for shopping center and it says 4.24 per thousand. So I think that meant to be 4.25. But my other comment or question with regard to that is that's, in this table, it's showing shopping center parking requirement separate from that square footage section. And so it doesn't actually have the square footage of the shopping center correlated to that requirement. So if you had a 10,000 square foot shopping center, could you have 4.25 per thousand? So I don't know if we want to fix the table because I don't think that's the intent so that it's clear that shopping center means over 200,000 square feet rather than, so that a small shopping center can't qualify for that lower parking.
Sure.
If that makes sense.
It does. Chair, that's an excellent catch. When we did the mixed-use zoning district a month, two months ago, we added in that the definition of shopping center. And I didn't memorize it yet, but I want to say it's a retail building over 200,000 square feet or something to that effect.
I just looked it up online, so it just must have not.
It must not be codified yet.
In there yet. So if the definition is 200, then we're good. I don't think that needs to be clarified, but if not, then yeah.
But good catch on the 4.24. Certainly not the intent there.
Any other initial comments for staff commissioners? I may have a couple of minor ones myself then. I like the reduction in parking for bank parking. I would have gone down to the four per thousand, but five, if staff feels comfortable that five is their threshold right now, lower than six, fine. I love the fact that we're memorializing compact parking stalls. That's a great move. I think that's been justified. At first, I was thinking that it might be nice to suggest a convenient location for compact stalls so they don't get pushed to the back of the lot away from view, understanding that might be a little bit hard to regulate. But I thought of that. If staff or anybody else thinks that has merit, I'd be interested maybe in some enhanced language there. I like the covered parking discussion about the assisted and memory care and convalescent care uses. The gymnasium parking, boy, I see how the simplification of the metric going down to a stall per square foot is easy. It just seems like, as Commissioner Mendi pointed out in our prior public hearing, there are so many different flavors of gymnasium uses and organized sports fields, especially as it relates to team sports with overlapping start times. A lot of times getting, I'll use the phrase ice time for ice arena. You know, the next team has to come out a half hour in advance before the game is over on the last. And so you have duplication of parking for the participants and the spectators. Sometimes the spectators are in organized bleachers. Sometimes they're standing room only, blah, blah, blah. And what's kind of fueling my comment here is the last public hearing in our flex district. We're offering an alternative method of parking compliance besides just following the strict parking calculations. It says, or you can go ahead and have a parking study done by a professional traffic engineer, suiting your purpose and identifying the data supportive behind that. And I love that flexibility to say, hey, I fit a little outside the box here. I'm going to get a special consultant with data to prove my need. And I'm thinking that this gymnasium parking would be another wonderful opportunity for someone to come in and say, you know, I've got this use where I'm doing volleyball by day, pickleball by night, kids indoor soccer after school. On the weekends, I'm doing blah, blah, blah. And they set up their gymnasium in five different ways over the course of a week or a month or a season. And you look at the worst-case scenario, you look at different spectator seating opportunities, and more importantly, the overlap scheduling, if there's something overlapping there. And that report gets presented, and then you really see what the issue is as opposed to just broad brushing out the 2.5 cars per thousand square feet. So perhaps, because I don't want to throw darts at the 2.5 per thousand square feet, maybe that just covers everything adequately. And I love EZ too. But that's why I'm bringing it up because it looks like we're offering a really nice tool in that flex service district for calculating parking. And it just seems like this might be an opportunity for that same alternative method.
Commissioner Farr, I'll point out why I think that's great. I agree, that completely solves the problem. But gymnasiums are allowed in more than just the flex service district. So I don't think we've solved that for any other zoning district if that parking provision's only in flex service.
But it would if you put it into the parking.
Yeah, so that's, I guess, the question. Should we? Because then that would, I mean, that's kind of a big thing, right? To give that provision, which I like that flexibility, but saying citywide, everybody can just kind of, you know, do the work, show us the math, and argue for the parking that they think.
I heard the chair say, just do that for gymnasiums. I did. Were you suggesting expanding that to other uses? Or were you just?
Oh, maybe I didn't understand, but that makes.
I was talking about it in the context of, for this public hearing, the gymnasium.
That parking requirement, change that from the one.
From the 2.5.
To that whole.
It could be 2.5.
Paragraph of.
You would just add the or to it. And the or is, I think it was stated as, the parking plan option. The other flex district to talk about a parking plan. So you could follow the ordinance, or you could do a parking plan. And the parking plan had 10 things you got to do for a parking plan. You got to figure it out. You got to hire a professional, review the ITE manual, provide data, blah, 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 to demonstrate compliance. And still, the city has some teeth in it to say, and we're going to put a little, not development agreement, what is it called? A little legal.
Shared parking agreement or something.
Shared parking agreement, blah, 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 to protect the interests of the city so that things don't spill out onto the street. Anyway, whatever that language is, that choice of going this way strict or that way alternative, I think makes a lot of sense for this particular use.
Chair Commissioners, we did do quite a bit of analysis on gymnasiums because there's, I mentioned earlier, the daycare centers are all over the board and what other cities do. Gymnasiums are similar. Every city does a little bit different. Some cities do it by the type of field or court, you know. And to your example, where they may be volleyball in the morning and baseball in the afternoon and soccer in the evening. We didn't want to get into that dynamics that would change. So that's where the two and a half came in. That's, it's on the low side, I think, of what other cities do when they look at a square foot use. So we wanted to provide as much flexibility as we could while still providing at least some safety for that business and for the neighboring businesses. I think I would rather look into the potential for, as you described, the kind of, we'll call it the flex service parking model as it applies to gymnasiums and other areas before we implement that because I want to make sure that it works in other areas. We have a relatively confined space in the flex service area and to apply it kind of throughout the city makes me pause it a little bit. And so I think we should monitor that for a little bit before implementing in other areas for other uses.
All right. Good points. Maybe I'll just throw out one other idea then, which is, at what point does the city suggest a traffic study when an applicant shows up to supplement their own parking data? Would, you mentioned that the 2.5 was on the low end.
Lower half, yeah.
Should we protect ourselves for that applicant who comes in a little aggressively and may in fact have more of a parking demand, but parks the site at 2.5 so that they can maximize their building area? And then all of a sudden, we see parking on the street. And all of a sudden, they say, well, city told us 2.5.
Sure.
Should we have something more in there, about 2.5? Or at staff's discretion, maybe a traffic study is needed for a specific use or something like that.
I think Carter can speak to this more, but almost every project requires some component of a traffic analysis, whether it's a memo of what are the current kind of conditions to a full-on traffic study of this is going to generate X trips. Part of also that process is we review their traffic information with their parking expectations to make sure that they match. And so that's virtually every project, we do something related to a traffic question as part of our application process. So I'm confident they were capturing those issues early and then raising them as issues to you when they are issues. But frequently, we've addressed them through the site design and all of that before you see it.
Okay, fantastic. I'm satisfied with that answer. Commissioner Grody?
The only outdoor activity I see mentioned is the golf course. Seventy-two parking spaces, just one per par. If you were going to do, I don't know if anyone was going to build a football stadium or a baseball stadium. You know, an outdoor facility would require something special, I would think, in terms of, you know, how many people are going to be there? Therefore, how much parking do we need?
So for the chair, the golf course is an example. It's kind of a two-component thing. One, you have the golf course use, yeah, one per par. You know, when you think, you know, normal par four, you'll have two groups on it, two groups of four. So you kind of apply that. But also, we've added, you know, if there's a retail component as part of the clubhouse, or if there's a restaurant, that would generate its own numbers. And we didn't change any of those. We just reorganized it. That's why that table looks a little different.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mendi?
Don't want to dwell too much on this parking thing, but back to the gymnasium. So I think that kind of triggered, we're establishing a minimum in the code, but I don't think that, no matter what their use is, I don't think we can all of a sudden require someone to exceed the minimum if they brought in a use that we think that it's not going to be enough parking. So that's a question. And then I think also then that solution we were talking about with the parking plan, no one's going to come in with a parking, the parking plan's only to ask for relief. Not, you know, they're not going to ask us to increase their required, right? If they need more than 2.5, they'll build more than 2.5. So now I'm kind of seeing that this is still a potential issue because there could be a use that has a higher than, you know, pretty. You would hope that a builder, developer is going to put in the parking that's needed for that use to succeed. But if, our code is establishing a minimum. So I think we should just keep that in mind as we're, you know, looking at that number.
Sure. I've been satisfied with staff's response that through implications of the recommendation of a staff, I'm sorry, a traffic analysis at staff level prior to hitting planning commission and council, I think that professionally-prepared traffic analysis would address those parking demands in excess of the 2.5. I think that'd get flushed out. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
All right. This is a public hearing. Again, there's nobody in the audience this evening, so I don't believe anybody's going to have comment. In which case, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing from one of the commissioners.
I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Weber. I have a motion from Commissioner Weber. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, say aye to close the public hearing.
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Abstain. Motion passes unanimously. Any summary comments warranted? I'm in agreement with staff's recommendation for these parking changes in the ordinance. I think they're well-founded.
In general, this was a task that needed to be taken on, was, and I think within reason, seems to be a very reasonable proposal. I think it was Commissioner Weber years ago said something about acres and acres of asphalt. And I think we want to, you know, try to have the appropriate number of acres of asphalt. And there are times when it seems we have too much. So I think what we've done here is a step in the right direction. And it is one of those circumstances that's never going to be perfect. So you make your best shot and go for it. And I think this is a good approach, good result.
I do too. Commissioner Grody?
I'm concerned about the golf courses, the more I think about this. I actually own part of a golf course that I developed, so I know a little bit about it. The 72 says you got to force them on each of the 18 holes. You got nobody waiting, nobody warming up. They're on the street parking where they shouldn't be then. I mean, I'm saying you probably need 1.25 times the 72. You need some buffer there for people who are not yet playing but are lined up and getting ready. The golf course is full.
Yep. Chair Commissioners, I think that's a valid question or valid comment. Let me do some analysis on what actually, the parking or the golf courses are actually parked at. My suspicion is that they're more than that minimum.
I would too.
And I'd be happy to share that with the commission after. And if change is warranted, we can add that to the list. But my suspicion is that all of the golf courses are parked excess of that. But I can do some checking.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grody. Are we ready for a motion?
I'll move.
Commissioner Grody?
I move to approve the ordinance amending City Code Chapter 11 relating to parking regulations as represented in the June 12, 2023 staff report.
All right, a motion's been made by Commissioner Grody. Do I have a second?
Would that include the additions to the, what was it, line 116?
The line 116 and then the 4.24 typo.
Accept.
Commissioner Grody, would you just maybe restate your motion for us, adding those prior clarifications by the commission members?
Section 6, give it to me again, Men.
Line 116 to clarify that it could be, it's a development agreement amongst the applicable parties, not necessarily multiple property owners.
Okay. Okay. So, I move to approve the ordinance amending City Code Chapter 11 relating to parking regulations as represented in the June 12, 2023 staff report, including a modification to clarify that developer agreement between multiple users in one or more structures would have to be recorded.
And the typo in the parking table of 4.24 to 4.25.
Okay, did everybody understand that? There were two additions to that. I think we understood it. Thank you. So there's been a motion. Do I have a second on that amended? Motion, a second by Commissioner Taylor. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion passes unanimously. Wonderful. Okay. Jeremy, do we have a planner's report tonight?
Not tonight, sir.
Okay, Commissioners, are any members interested in doing a members' report? Seeing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the planning commission meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Closed. Planning commission meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.